Schuleberger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I promise to be nice to no one.
Yeah, but nobody else he can make that promise for. In fact, he's already given me one. So, um, first item, public comment. Crowd goes wild. Um. We'll go down to, uh, Summer Lake ODFW pill payment action consideration. This is something Dave Golds brought up yesterday. Um, regarding the, uh, Summer Lake Wildlife Refuge. Um, they, they are exempt from paying taxes, uh, but, um, in their efforts to be good neighbors, um, and for the, to the county, they have historically paid a, uh, a property, uh, tax or a pill payment, payment in lieu of tax on a portion of the Wildlife Refuge. Uh, and the, this year's sum amounts to?
Eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Alright, so I had two figures here in the bottom. I was wanting to make sure that I was reading my own. Eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. Um, so today we will be basically, um, just approving it and then accepting it. I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, the pill with Summer Lake Refuge. Um, and Oregon put in Fish and Wildlife for a positive fiscal impact of eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to publicly thank, uh, ODFW for doing that because they don't have to. Thank you.
Aye. Um, with that said, all, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, next item, meeting minutes. We have work session minutes, uh, from ten-five twenty-twenty-one and regular session meetings from ten-six twenty-twenty-one. entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve meeting minutes from October fifth twenty-twenty-one work session and October sixth twenty-twenty-one regular session as presented.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, being that we're just rocking and through this, um, do we wanna go down to any liaison updates? Uh, I know Commissioner Howerson, you were at the Fair Board last night, um, and Commissioner Schuleberger, you were at our Fire Defense Board meeting. Um, wanna share any updates out there, you?
Um, my meeting was strictly on our maintenance program. Uh, we're hiring another maintenance person, uh, for the fairgrounds. Um, that's about it. We had lots of comments over there from different people in the public stating how the fairgrounds look so much better and I'm really proud of Dave and my maintenance guys for doing all the hard work. We've done, the county's done about twenty thousand dollars worth of labor out there and I just want to thank you guys too for allowing us to make that decision to streamline our maintenance program out of the fairgrounds and things are looking up out there. And I don't know if I publicly said in a meeting, um, I would rather thank Collins Mine for only making two minutes longer to us for making the program out there.
Livestock.
Livestock.
Yeah, and work on livestock products. And we actually replaced a few boards in the grant stands area. Disabled grant. And so I just wanted to publicly thank Collins Mine for making that contribution to us, especially in a time where lung attacks are so expensive. I, it really helped us, so absolutely. That's all I got.
It helped with safety, uh, not only the livestock, but the kids and boards because we had some, they covered up some sharp objects and things like that.
This is the first time in recent memory that the bathrooms weren't out of order at the fairgrounds. Um, we did have a water leak, somebody backed into the pipe out next to the, you know, Fifth Glen Arena. Jeremy went out there on the weekend and fixed it. And so, um, it was just, everything went smoother. And it's, this is just four and eight months into it. And so, the program truly.
Yeah, that's great. There is, uh, are there much fire crews still out of?
There's also no.
So it's packed up and done?
Yeah. Okay. We're getting ready, Riley's getting ready for, at the holiday fair coming up and there was one other thing that I can't remember in their future, but, yeah. Um, we're putting in an air conditioning system in building number one. And so, when we have fire crews again, um, we could present them with an air conditioner.
So comfortable.
That's good enough. Yeah, that's great.
It's hot in here.
Yeah, pardon me?
It's hot in here.
Yeah. You're in the summer.
We're not gonna do it in building number two because in our master plan, part of that building's gonna leave. The other part will be an open air pavilion, nothing used for a rebrand room. Check your mind on the road. So, good things happening. I'm really excited.
Um, Fire Defense Board, how was that last night?
Uh, so Lake County Fire Defense Board, uh, had their first meeting in quite a while because they've all been canceled due to, uh, fire activity. Um, so there was, uh, a fair amount to discuss. Uh, good representation from all the fire chiefs throughout the county, uh, Oregon State Fire Marshals were there and represented. Daniel Taggart, OEM, uh, person who helped run the meeting. And we discussed, uh, number of items. One of them was ordinance number twenty-seven, the burn ban. Uh, that rule that is in effect at this time that we approved in July. We kinda looked at, looked over some of the, uh, discussion points in that and everybody's, uh, moving forward. One of the main talking points is that we wanted to make sure that we stayed in line with ODF as far as going into fire season and going out of fire season. We weren't going independent, really, really on that. Um, fire chiefs do have the ability to request a burn ban to the commissioners for approval for a period of time. Uh, if you think about this in the spring, if we have a super dry spring, but we're not in fire season, we may need to issue a burn ban during a small period of time and we could also come out of it. So, uh, you know, we now have that ability. So, um, anyway, good discussion on that. And I think fire chiefs are happy with that. We will need to make sure that we, uh, let the public know about that. That's in play. Um, the ARPA money that supposedly is coming. You know, the, uh, High Desert RFP and the Work Valley RFP has a, a good chunk of money coming and they're, uh, discussing how about they work, still haven't seen any of it. Also, rural fire, uh, districts, uh, also have a chunk of money. They're, they need to work on getting a list of what they would plan to purchase. Money shows up. Representative, uh, Bree Iverson has requested that list as that, uh, rural RFD one falls under her, one of her persons that she's gonna be, uh, in charge of. So. So that was a good discussion item. We're gonna have an after-action review, uh, sometime this fall to, to kinda talk about how things went with, uh, Blue Lake, Pat Meadow and Cooper Fires, Fort Lake County. And, uh, I think they're gonna have a good discussion with that. And then also, uh, set some dates for future meetings and so it's coming to light right now.
Good. What kind of jog my memory on one day talking about hard money and all that, but, um, just go ahead. I've got the RFP out for the, uh, Clamton County and Lake County's joining together to get broadband, broadband services and do a master plan for broadband. And so, that RFP is out now and I'm looking forward to what that has to say and where we can go. North Lake to South Lake and in-between. So.
Do we know yet how many, uh, how many people have actually put in?
We have one out. Can't quite talk to Denise last week.
Okay.
And I'll call her again here in a day or two to see where we're at.
I just wanted to make sure we did. I also talked to Denise and I said it's the need that guys are going together with Clamton County. We didn't wanna be second fiddle.
Right.
And I wanna, as I said, I'm not asking any more than pity pity. But I want us to be just as equal in things as Clamton. And she emphasized that, uh, she brought up and that. So it's a good thing to go together. That way we'll work in South Central Oregon. Think it'll help us potentially with, uh, future funding because we got a broader area. We can put in for potentially more money and get more service provided. Uh, but just wanted to look out for that county as well.
So very good. Um, quickly, time is, um, time's ten fifteen. Uh, I will go ahead and open up, uh, hearing for ordinance fifty-two point one zero three. And, uh, pertaining to, um, fees for the clerk's office. Leave that open if there's any comment, if anyone shows up and wants to talk about it.
Is this, is this the last meeting on the?
Yes. At the close of this hearing, we will then, uh, one up. But, um, do we have anyone in the chat? Anyone requesting to get on or anything? Okay, okay, that's, that's us. Um.
Are we gonna cover what Judy Clark did yesterday?
Oh. Oh, very good point. I think I have the whole regular session. Should've asked for additions. Just gonna do that.
We've got some new things. We're gonna have to make a decision on besides.
Right. So as far as, uh, this is on the environmental health fee schedule. Um. I know you were wanting to add to this and more thought, more discussion. I'm just not, I'm not convinced we're really, that we really have a good grasp on all the different businesses that have been missed and that haven't had, uh, haven't had any interaction yet with, uh, public health and all across the county. And so, when we talk about, you know, going ahead and paying the fees, even though we did pay the fees last year for, uh, all the businesses, I think it'd be a good idea going forward now that the businesses are back open and working and they're, you know, a number of the food trucks were making pretty good, uh, flow, cash flow during the fire season. And, uh, it's not a substantial fee, uh, for a small business. It, it can be. So, just, um, just thoughts on where you guys think we oughta go with this for now. We used COVID CRF dollars last time, correct? So.
To pay the business licenses.
Yeah, to pay the business licenses and fees last year. And that was due to them being closed. So I'm not sure that we could do that again this time. It's not a substantial amount for us or, you know, potentially the businesses, but it's. And you wanna be fair all the way around.
Well, there are properties, I think there still is COVID money.
There is.
You'd have to prove that if they've had a negative impact. I don't know. Nobody's asking us for that. We could do a deep dive, I guess, but, um, I guess I'm inclined to make a motion to accept what's been presented. So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the environmental health fee schedule of seventy-five dollars for school lunch program. And warehouse and commissary categories of fee of a hundred and eighty and three hundred and fifty dollars respectively as presented.
Second.
Also, I feel like, um, discussion.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm kinda torn on this deal. Because of what I spoke about yesterday. They used it as a target, state did, a lot of businesses and I grew up about taste and whatnot. And so, on the other side of it though, I want people to be educated like Judy said on handling food. Uh, that's very, very important to, to people actually. Um, and so, I'm really torn on this because it's another requirement of the state for businesses. So I, I'm going to abstain from the vote because I'm torn. And so.
Well, just while we have a second on the table, um, and you can withdraw your second, that's fine, but.
I'm not, I'm not gonna withdraw my second. I'm gonna, we voted on, but I can't in good conscience vote yay or nay because I'm torn right now. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I understand.
I, I believe Judy's doing the best job anybody can do in public health, so I'm gonna make that clear. But the state used people with business license as a target. Said OSHA and I thought it was very tyrannical, but on the other side of it, I want people to be able to serve food safely. And so, I'm just explaining why I'm gonna abstain from the vote because in one way I want it, in another way I don't. I'm down to the, so.
Procedural question that I, I guess, and maybe Melanie, help me out here if you could.
I, I could second and.
You can second and vote against him. Okay.
I, I wasn't trying to throw a kink in it.
Oh, I understand.
I'm just telling you guys where I stand on this and that's what I'm doing. I've never abstained from a vote before. Well, but since I can't make up my mind one way or the other, it's not fair to you guys.
No, I'm perfectly in.
Public health.
And, you know, it, as long as we're having the discussion on this then, you know, if you feel like these fees are inappropriate or too high or unfair, um, or that we need to relook at them, we can do that.
I, I, I don't think they're too high. I mean, they, they rate it on, which this doesn't state, but like it goes from, um, every childcare where you're serving lunches is seventy-five dollars, but the other fees should say one eighty to three hundred and fifty. Um, they base that on square footage and different things.
Correct.
And so, um, I don't think that's out of line. It's just that I don't like what the state did. You wanted to amend the motion. What would I amend it to? Between one eighty and three fifty? The thing is, is that we're kind of in a pickle here because we, the fees are actually paid by Lake District. We, the gal that she has come over, she charges them a certain amount, whatever that is. The district hospital pays her because they're the public health. They're the public health, the contract, we're the public health. And so, to me, it looks like we're making a decision to, for, for the hospital when the hospital should be the ones that, but we're, since we're the authority, we have to make the decision.
Right.
And so it's kinda convoluted, but.
And what Judy said yesterday was that they can't give these, uh, businesses a license if we don't have this in place.
Mm-hmm. And, and that's part of the.
That's our problem.
That's part of the problem because once they get a license, then they're under the radar at the state. And which led to all the crap that all of our businesses had to go through with the COVID. And so, that's my dilemma. Is do I think they should have a license so they could be educated and make sure they're not feeding bad stuff to people? Yes. But on the other hand is you're making the target in the state. And so, that's why I'm voting what I meant. And so.
Yeah, I, I, I just am inclined to believe if you're gonna be in the restaurant business, this is one of the things that you know you have to go.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with you very. It's just, I, I agree, you know, you should have to be checked to make sure you're not feeding people. You know, I was, I had an FDA, um, inspected facility and so I know the annoyance of feeding people good stuff. And so. But on the other hand, I just, I, I'm pissed off at the state and I'm gonna be that way for a while. So, that's why I just wanted to, I didn't want it to drag out and make a huge deal out of it. But I wanted you guys to understand. I wanted you guys to understand why I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do. Okay?
Okay.
So you can make the motion any way you want. It's not gonna change.
Okay, okay, the motion's been made then. Okay. And no amendment? Okay. Any further discussion?
Be, beat that dead horse.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Um, with that, I will call for a, a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, uh, opposed or, um, staying?
I won't stay. For those reasons.
Okay, motion passes. Um, thank you.
I just didn't want you guys to, I wanted you guys to know why I was gonna do it.
I fully understand. Alrighty, um, I do have one update real quickly, uh, on, uh, water. Uh, I have a meeting with, uh, Oregon Water Resource Department to discuss, uh, our water master position, um, after this meeting. And, uh, I'll hopefully have an update for you guys then. As you know, we haven't had, our water master hasn't been in for some time. Um, and we've been running most of the, uh, Lake County water issues through the Bend Office. And, uh, you know, there's, there's been some complaints there on the public and there's some issues not having someone that you can kinda talk to. Um, they don't always get very good responses from the Bend Office and, uh, it's just been somewhat of a hassle. So I will be following up with that later today. The other thing is, um, Alpli Lake. Um, it's been a long bit of Lake County's history. Uh, years ago, of course, as you guys are aware, um, they dumped, um, a tremendous amount of toxic waste in Alpli Lake up three ninety-five corridor. Um, the byproduct primarily from Agent Orange, including two forty and two forty T. And they, uh, they have not, they have no intention of cleaning it up. The DEQ specifically. Um, they were told not to dump the site there back in the day by the EPA. They ended, they did it anyway. Uh, it was online, they crushed the barrels and buried them. And, um, and as a result of a lawsuit, um, they, the EQ was forced to buy and purchase the property. Um, when they passed the Superfund Bill here in the state of Oregon, there was one small line up within that that stated that they could not use Superfund dollars, uh, for cleanup on any state-owned property. Um, Alpli Lake is the only toxic waste chemicals waste site in the entire state that is owned by DEQ. And it was written that way specifically because they didn't want to use all the Superfund dollars for that site. And they knew that's what it was likely going to happen, in my opinion. I, I have a feeling that is why it was written into the bill that way. So, we've been working with another company, uh, to see if, to do some research. Um, they were not able to get soil samples or water samples from the wells, but they were able to recreate, um, I believe, a, um,
I thought they did give permission to get water samples.
So, that's the second part, but I'll just finish up on this. They, they got, they created basically, uh, um, a set of some soil that was contaminated by these type of chemicals. And they sent it to a lab down in Southern California where they applied their product. And they were able to remove seven, ninety-seven percent of some of the, the most toxic chemicals from, and, and just eliminate them and, uh, neutralize them. So, I was seeing tremendous, you know, obviously we've had some concerns because there was a plume of the chemicals that bleached out. They put in monitoring wells and everything else, try and monitor the plume. The EQ maintains that it, it's not moving, but then again, they haven't been to the site in the last two years. So, I wrote a letter to DEQ stating that they were in breach of the agreement that they were to continue monitoring annually, um, and seasonally the site to make sure that that plume did not continue going outward. Uh, it is directly at the bottom of the fault line of Abert Rim. Um, minor earthquakes, different things like that. You risk exposure to the arroper. And so, I said, you know, what's happening? Because you guys were supposed to come out here. We're hoping to get, um.
Who are you talking?
That I was speaking with the gentleman, with, uh, um, Tracy England and.
With DEQ.
With the EQ at Bend Office. I wrote an email. I have not gotten a response. And, and just explained, you know, when are you guys gonna be out here? I heard through the contract, the, the gentleman who we were working with, um, Jesse Price, that, uh, Tracy had an intention of coming out this last week on Monday. Um, he has postponed that for several weeks, so he won't be out here for another week or so. But Tracy was supposed to give or allow Jesse Price with Soil Restoration, um, to go in and take water samples. It's what I'm. to go in and take water samples is what I'm pushing for from the worst contaminated well. And as well as soil samples. So that we could test this product further to see if it was, it actually worked.
So just to update very, um, the soil restoration, people came and talked to us and they created a bacterial, scientifically bacterial way to clean landfills, blah, blah, blah. And their information that they gave was very, very interesting. I mean, they're, they're pretty sure they can clean up this site with their application of.
Their chemical, which is a, a, a form of white fungus, uh, white fungi that can reproduce itself. Um, and it's good for farms and everything else. I actually used the product on my farm. Um, it's, it, it stimulates the growth of good grasses, cuts down the growth of weeds and helps other grasses choke out those weeds and other types of balances soils out. And, uh, it's an incredible, um, product, uh, that I was just researching and I thought, you know, like there needs to, but in, in terms of eliminating and neutralizing toxic chemicals, I thought this needs some, we need to look at this. Because Alcoy Lake has been one of those peak dark secrets of Lake County for, for far too long, since the seventies. That we've never addressed because we didn't, honestly didn't know how. Prior to this, the technology was, okay, we're gonna go in there and remove all the soil and truck it away somewhere else. Well, that doesn't, so no, just puts it, kind of a waste site somewhere else, not in the location. So, um, I'm hopeful that Tracy England will respond and hopefully come out within a few weeks to the site and, uh, and allow, uh, Jesse Price to extract, um, some chemical samples, uh, for testing. So that's where that's at right now. I figured I'd update you guys though and allow the public to be updated on the issue as well. Because it's been a long time since we've gotten any kind of response. They shut their offices down due to COVID and they weren't allowing their personnel to be in the office. So this will be the first site visit since 2019. And, uh, it's well overdue for an entity that, that promised to maintain good monitoring of the site. So, um, with that, I don't really have too much else for an update. Any other discussion? I think it's on. All right. So with that, I will close the hearing with no public comment given on ordinance 52.103 on a dog at large fees. And with that being the last item on the agenda for action consideration, I'll entertain a motion on that ordinance. I'm updating those fees. I have ordinance right here. I can see in the right place.
So I will make a motion to accept ordinance number 52103, Lake County court fees as presented.
Second. Motion to amend and second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Correct. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. With nothing else to come before us, um, I will, uh, recess this meeting until our final item at four o'clock, our Blue Martine Gold Exception Hearing, um, the time being, uh, ten thirty-six. And we will see you all at four o'clock this evening.